Regular scheduled council meeting, January seventeen thousand twenty three. If you're all during me in the budget.
I. And to the Republic for officious hands. One nation under God, in the assault.
All right, moving on, I agree the zoom instruction.
All right, so I'll just finish with you on the entry. Just a reminder that our speakers in the ceiling. So when you get into talking on the, I just try to keep it most that way it doesn't interview with people there listening over Zoom. And for those that are on Zoom, when the times are appropriate, go ahead and hit reaction. But I'm gonna raise your hand if you have a comment or go ahead and use the. Meeting chat room as well, and I'll read it back to the board if it's. That's it.
Thanks, Robert. Next on the agenda is item number four.
Mr. President, if we could maybe, I know at the last meeting there were some in the audience that didn't know everybody at the table. Could we maybe send them in introductions? Would that be okay?
I'm in the street.
Molly Weber, and I am member at large, eight twenty three South Clear Lake.
Dan Rippey, I am at one twenty six Lakeside Court, Ward.
I'm Darren Thorpe, hall thirty six, White Harbor Drive, line the brokers of.
Brent Sluster, at large, ninety five Penner.
George Schenkel, one forty four West Clear Lake. Ward one. For summer.
Robert, always on the straight.
Right, thank you. After the suspension with our legal counsel because of our vacancy in the Florida trailer. It was recommended that. Looking at the agenda that we table items four. Five. Six A. And item. Eight, all the new business. So I am making a motion to table all these until we build our trailer's position.
This is Brent Sluster, I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes, yes.
Those opposed, then sign. All right, skipping down monthly report, item six B, Marcos before.
Clear Lake Police Department worked a total of two hundred and seventy five point. Seven five hours drove a total of eight hundred and fifty four miles. Police Department took three reports for the month of December, Sheriff's Office handled two reports within the town and. Five reports. Within the. Township. There was one traffic citation written and one that then checked completed for the police department. We had our three agency assists. The sheriff's department had one alarm they responded to in town and one welfare check. And township that responded to a property damage crash. Welfare suspicion. Domestic and a trespassing complaint. And that's all I have for this one instance.
Any updates on the traffic?
Radar finds, radar finds have been in, swaying on the guide by the poses. And the posts installed on the nerves.
Well, I hadn't really planned on that because it's not with the young. I was, yeah, I can't plan on doing the tour stream.
Moving on, I would just require the program, right?
So, Robert, you don't pull. So, within the town of Clear Lake, we have. Two agency assist mutual aids. Two CO two investigations and one fire alarm. For the Clear Lake Township, we had one medical assist and one rubbish fire. For a grand total of seven for the region. If you were to pull the summary up, this is the first time we've actually got to. Utilize the new full summary for the year. And as an overview, just want to point out. For the region totals in twenty twenty two, we had ninety seven total. Sixty, sixty four of those events were within the town of Clear Lake. However, as we've all discussed, the mutual aids are counted underneath the town of Clear Lake, and that accounted for over half. That was thirty four. The grand total for Clear Lake Township was thirty three. Their highest point was medical assist, as was the town of Clear Lake. So we had a total of twenty eight medical assists in the region. Which basically account the medical assist and the mutual aids accounted for over two thirds of the total incidents within. Our region. And we've got everything set up to run next year, and Chris, to your point, I'll have your side.
Questions for Rob? All right, moving on, somebody, there's no straight of Robert.
All right, so I only had. Two ILPs, one for Star Homes at, well, over six Stephen Temple at, you know, or nine, nine two South Clear Lake Drive. Adding an additional sixty five square feet to an existing home. And then Roger and Jackie Oral, they are doing residential addition. At three oh five Penner. No planning commission hearing, no BZA hearing. The UDO updates are complete, if anyone ever wants a copy of it, just let me know. So far with everybody. I haven't had any other requests for them, so I still have a couple chapters if anyone needs them. Comprehensive plan, I talked to you guys last month about doing a comprehensive plan update. I have since then reached out to three planning commission. So they are available to help with the master plan when. All the doctor in row working, working on getting a scope of work and that way I can present it when the time is appropriate. I'm working with Dan on that, so make contact with them. The only other thing that's really updated is I have my twenty twenty two annual report attached for show going when I get to. What's the next?
Hey, Robert, a quick question, are we going to be reaching out to other organizations regarding comprehensive plans?
I.
Scope of work and.
I know. Yeah, I can reach out to them too. I only reach out to them typically in their lower and they, they have a lot of. You know, really intelligent people that have been in the committee that have been doing the stuff, so I won't reach out to them, but I can. But they'll be a little bit more expensive.
I've actually got one that I'm not recalling who it was off the top of my head that. They've responded to a request that we made last year, I think. I think actually, Molly, you turned me on to this particular.
Yeah, the group that did the one in La Grange, that was written up in paper.
Yeah, they, they typically dealt with larger communities. So I had asked them to see if they could scale their processes to be more aligned. With our size community, they did that, and as Robert said, they were convicting around a fifty K. Like price tag. And your.
Mine was ten.
But maybe one more.
Okay, yeah, I'll reach out a little more through the.
And what I know, Robert, that I'm well familiar with it, I'll give you the contact information from there.
Yeah, and typically to the association, planning associations, they have some contacts too, which are reputable, so. Moving on to my annual report, I don't know if you guys have ever had an annual report before, but. Do my, here, so it's a little bit later. This just basically is a summary of everything that happened for the year. Highlighting certain things, so obviously Larry did a lot of work for the year since I've only been here for. Quarter of the year, so a lot of this is actually contributed again. But often the data that I've collected over the last four years since twenty nineteen. ILPs have been steadily increasing, about one permit a year, but the biggest jump was actually from two thousand twenty one to. This last year at seven point five percent. You can see on your board of zoning of appeals. It shows the number of variance requests. One thing to keep in mind with these various requests is usually that it's one applicant with multiple requests. So the number seems high, but it's, it's probably on average about three per one, per one meeting. So then the planning commission, planning commission hearings are rezoning administrative subdivisions and minor subdivisions. This year is. Trending, what did I say? He's clearly, where is that? In twenty twenty two, there was a six percent decrease in PC requests for rezonings. Administrative subdivisions or minor subdivisions, so that actually went down. And the other thing I put on here is permits by street project type. And then it kind of gives a summary of everything in that one graph there, so. Doing fairly well, I think, I mean, I don't think it's going to go up to a hundred ILPs, but it's definitely going up. Next is just, this is just an overview of all the variances, as you can see, like I said, you got four for one person, or sorry. Two for one variance, or two variances for one property, two variances for one property, and three for one property, so. Because they're requesting multiple variances. Shows the action as well. Playing permission, again, just an overview, one rezoning, three minor subdivision, or four minor subdivisions this year. Again, showing the outcomes. And then last but not least, the UDO updates, so these are all the updates for the year, I believe, yeah. In two or sixteen, I mean, this year. Sixteen UDO updates, you know, it started in twenty eighteen, so. The playing commission and boards that are diligent, make sure they're done right, which comes through right away. And that's the annual report.
Well done. It's the first one I've seen.
Well, that's just something I, I commonly do, so that just kind of brings everything back together for the year and kind of shows the trends, so. That way, especially with variants of, I don't see the kinds of variances, just kind of outlines how the community is running, so.
Yeah, I'm interested in putting together, keeping an eye on your office and the annual report, all our indicators and make a good choice.
I have the right person.
Yes.
And Robert. All right, moving on, superintendent's report.
I worked a hundred ninety, a hundred ninety nine hours last month, Denver had a hundred and eighty five and a half, I had no road cut permits. No demo permits, and I had two letters of non-adjection. We only had eight locates last month, two alarm calls, replaced two grinders. We didn't repair any, we didn't set up any. We have nine set up and ready to go in, we have eleven that are still boxed, and I have the three green mans. To use. That came back from CEM. Our average daily flow was pointing two thousand. Two hundred and thirty gallons per day. We received, in the city department summary, we received those three grinders back from CEM. I have. I didn't think we were going to put in. The grinder at. Is it three thirty five, Robert, parent?
Three oh five.
Three oh five Penner as quick as we did, but actually.
No, I'm sorry, you were correct, three thirty five.
So we ended up using our extra simplex grinder station we have on hand already, I didn't figure they were going to do it till spring. They're actually going to set it tomorrow. So I. Look, or I got prices on getting two more of the simplex stations and two more of the replacement pumps for there because I used. My last pump up this last week. For that particular style grinder. And a new power cord. Which those, the simplex stations were. Five thousand seven hundred and ninety two, twenty two each. And the grinder pumps for those stations were two thousand four hundred and forty five, sixty two. And the new cords for them are fifty five dollars and sixty two cents apiece. But the quotes are only good for thirty days right now. Our steward truck mileage was three hundred and ninety eight miles. And for the street department, I'd like to remind all the residents to. Put snow stakes out so that we can see the stones at the edge of the road. The driveway that is up a little bit, stuff like that, so we don't catch it. And please keep your trash cans in the corrals or away from the street because we've picked a lot of those out already this year. And street truck, or the dump truck mileage was three hundred and ninety. And that's what I have.
What's the, what's the urgency on the? Grinder?
The simplex stations. If we have one get damaged, we don't have one to put in.
Yeah, I understand, but so. Can I wait?
It, it can, but.
What was the response time on speed here on those reviews? I wanted to end up taking.
Like eight weeks because they get damaged in parts. Or they didn't, part for getting damaged in shipping.
What was normal?
Usually. It's three to four weeks, depending on how backed up their shop is.
Any other questions for guy? Thank you. All right, item of council member reports.
Good pass. Yeah. Okay, that leads me. Again, so we had two permits for the month, showing a four year metric that. Again, showing by our escape over the last four years. There's going to be continuing metric there. Our active to approve by LPs is five days, we're, we're doing a good job of keeping at that, and then between the two permits I had last month, I was able to keep a hundred percent. Received with the information needed, so.
Were you doing anything different?
A lot of it is they just haven't turned it in, they ask a lot of questions before they turn them in, so I've been able to work with.
Okay.
I, yeah, kind of watching them through right now. So still working on, you know, like a check, like I said, I can hand out, and that way they can go through and, you know, mark off everything and then turn it and complete. But it's just a matter of training on that part, so.
Nothing here, I already stated the.
I am on spring. Trying to get it loaded up here again.
Okay.
I have trouble reading that great background to her.
Yeah, my fault. It looks like we're, we're returned back to the normal.
Yeah, we're pretty much back to where our normal flow is. So.
Okay.
Part of the radar sign out, we're living. Pages and those. That came in, in my term, that's still consistent. Traffic sound. And. Speeders from a standard system.
You would know it, I think it was last month that there was concerned about the speed, you see. Did anything come of that?
Speed, I mean, absolutely, that radar pointed that foot back in for northbound, it was, she went back down again. Perhaps it's catching their attention that they're speeding. I know a couple of us outside of lines, clearly driving, we haven't. Had any traffic stops, we're even speeding when we've been out there, I think, just the, the sign getting put back up in place, the period.
Great. Thanks.
Kind of watch the contractors running up to Port Park. They go pretty fast.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, council member report.
So I prepared a few slides here to take a little bit of a closer look at the DLZ. DLZ alternative approach to our roads. Namely, instead of a kind of a resurface, driving and resurface approach, DLZ came forward in November. With an alternate approach that they thought might save us some money in the long term. Which is address the root causes of why we're seeing premature lifespan in our roads. And I thought that it was prudent to at least take a closer look to see at a level, at some level. If it was worth to pursue at another level, a deeper level, so that's what this is, this discussion I'd like to go through. Looks at next slide is really the motivations for me to take this closer look was. You know, a lot of the discussions that we've had throughout the, the community crossroads grant. Projects this year. The communities expressed desire to continue to look for cost reductions, particularly we came out of our budget discussions. For twenty twenty three. The cost saving opportunities that DLZ presented in November. And then some of the advantages that we currently enjoy with our road work provided by the CCNG program, which is a seventy five percent. Twenty five percent cost share. Program. Next slide is kind of a reminder of, you know, what the suggested alternative approach was. It was really geared towards driving the lifespan from what DLZ stated was eight to ten years of their observation on our roads. And really getting it up to more of what it should be expected to be, which is on the order of twenty years lifespan for the roads. And. What DLZ has done as far as investigating why we might be seeing premature failure of our roads. Is related to inadequate drainage, inadequate asphalt and subgrade structure. Or the weight of the vehicle traffic that's on our roads, particularly construction. And inadequate routine maintenance, so those were kind of the top three, and this, this was just a lift out of their presentation in November. So there are three basic assumptions that are contained. In this realizing this alternative benefits of this alternative approach. The first would be, you know, how long is the. CCNG program, you know, going to last, you know, are there, is there a risk of it going away while we're trying to. Pursue a reconstruction of our roads. The second one is, is. What is the, the current lifespan of our roads? And, and trying to validate, you know, is the eight to ten years as stated by DLZ? You know, could I, could I independently, I guess. Back that up? And then third, is there truly a cost savings over the long haul? So I took a little bit closer look at all three of those elements. The next slide. Gets into some more information about the community profits municipal grants. This grant was put in place by Governor Pence back in twenty sixteen. It is a winter out of the Indiana Department of Transportation. I spoke directly with Kathy Eaton Metallip, who is the current. Person responsible within in that. About the program. And the CCNG funds comes from the state of Indiana, so there is no federal contribution to this program. And it's directly a charge within the Indiana registration for cars. Electric vehicles and trucks. As with any program, it's contentious on the Indiana legislature to, to vote to continue to, to move forward with it. But in, in Kathy's opinion. She did not see any indication that the CCNG would go away, so that, that was a very positive statement. The CCNG provides financial assistance with small local Indiana governments that do not qualify for federal road grants, which is us. There is no federal money for us to take advantage of to maintain our roads. That list currently totals six hundred and fifty. Units of local government. But she only receives twenty five percent. Of that six hundred and fifty in applications. CCNG road projects are not held to end that standards, that was another. New piece of information for me personally. However, using engineering basis and testing of the proposed project is viewed favorably, and she cited specifically the, the road course. That we, that we took this last year. Around the lake. So my takeaway there was, you know, Kathy does not see any indication. That we should worry about the CCNG going away. The next slide was the projected road lifespan. So the real data that we have is the PESA ratings, and these have been taken from twenty seventeen. Twenty eighteen. Twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, so I just have to look at those. And within Excel, you can do a, in a, a projection based on those data sets. As any engineer would say, you know, it's a pretty limited data set, so. The conclusions, you know, aren't anything you would want to put money on, but they do, they do, interestingly enough. There's kind of trends of, of life that, as you look at this graph, I. Put a horizontal line at three, which is a poor quality road. And then you can see the PESA ratings up above that for the various road segments. South Clear Lake Drive, number nine, segment number nine, is showing a six year lifespan. East Clear Lake Drive, section number two, five years. Interestingly enough, Paris Drive is showing a projection of ten years on West Clear Lake Drive. Section three, ten years. The next slide shows some additional examples, East Clear Lake Drive. Sections four and six, about seven years, and East Clear Lake Drive Sections one and two, about six years. So the reason that I picked those particular road segments is that when you look at the PESA rating data. If you see a very high rating, it infers and that that was repaid. So it was starting out new. And then we have subsequent ratings, how it's, how it's degrading over time. So that's why I took a look at them. But it seemed to correlate, you know, loosely to DLZ's assertion that we're doing eight to ten years. So it seemed. It seemed like we should be concerned. This is my takeaway on that. I tried to correlate that on the next slide to why are some roads looking like they have a longer lifespan than others? And thanks to Robert and his metrics. And Chris and his metrics, I looked at the number of vehicles to see if there was a correlation there. And East Clear Lake does, is running about forty two hundred vehicles and forty four hundred vehicles. And South Clear Lake Drive is about thirteen hundred and eighty four, yet the lifespans of those roads. Are similar in the, in the. Yet the lifespans of those roads are similar in the in the. In the five to seven year time range. So it didn't seem to correlate very well with number of vehicles. But when you look at the construction that's going on, you can see that primarily construction is happening on East Clear Lake Drive, South Clear Lake Drive and West Clear Lake Drive. And so based on that. And we know that those construction vehicles are in the sixty to seventy thousand pound for a cement truck, for example. It's, it seemed to me that there was a slight correlation to that, to the data on the lifespan of the roads. Where we're seeing construction traffic is degrading. The next, the next slide is the detailed cost model that I put together. To take a look at the two approaches. One is the approach, the current approach, which is the orange colored line. Which was the grind and and the resurface every ten years. And then the second is the red line, which is to go in, correct the root causes. Put in a new road bed, address the drainage concerns. And and do proper maintenance of the roads. And you can see where the red line crosses the orange line. And then the, that's the point in which the cost, the investment cost of the reconstruction are. Covered as opposed to staying with the current approach. And from that point forward, you actually started seeing a savings to the town. And although the years are, you know, it's not, it's not probably in our lifetime, but it's certainly in our grandchildren's lifetime. Because we're looking at that cost over point is about thirty years out. But in fifty years, it shows a two point two million dollar savings to the town. And that would continue to grow as time moved to the right. So I didn't see in my effort to take a a closer look. Of the approach, anything that said that we shouldn't get serious and take a more deeper dive, look at it. And so I put together a recommendation slide. And that was to form a broader committee. And to look at, look at, you know, the analyses that I've done, bring in additional eyes into that, additional perspectives. Create a road policy for consideration by council by the July, August timeframe of this year. And I would suggest also as a part of that effort. That we put together a vision and mission statement for the town Clear Lake Roads. This provides guidance to subsequent council members. It provides a more predictable way of the community seeing the decisions that are being made on their roads. We do the overall construction maintenance cost assessment, sustainability assessment, recurring revenue applicable for its roads. That's one thing that is in that cost model is I constrained it to only. Assume the the current tax levy amount of funding for our portion of the twenty five percent. So if if for some reason we had more or less, if we had more money to put towards the roads. Then we could do more length of of road in any particular year. And also with this, this particular committee would take a look. And and as I said, there's a variation in road lifespans currently. Is to better understand that, and maybe we don't need to do all the roads. The the current model assumes we're doing all nine point nine miles of road. So if we choose to do fewer miles of road, our savings actually start sooner than the thirty years. So that was a lot, I put a lot of effort into it, but I wouldn't entertain the question.
But Dan, this is a great start. Something I think you and I touched on briefly at the last council meeting and certainly needed. I think there's some great resources at our community, some engineers. That have experience in construction in roads that that I think we volunteer for that committee. And we just need to identify them and and get it set up. I don't want to start picking at pieces here, this is not the time or place to do it. But but certainly the sooner we get started, the better, and to look at the assumptions we're making on them. I know currently that the roads that are on the community crossing grant, their current age is anywhere from. I believe it's fifteen years old to thirty eight years old. And they're all passable roads, so I think maybe. The the engineering firm is a little short on their timelines, but again, that could be debated here, but to put it to the committee when they when they work it. Also, we have to remember that we're in a unique community here. A lot of our roads are built on swamps or in wetlands. And to to drain them is impossible, we just have to raise it to get them out. You can't drain water uphill, so again, ready, could address that and identify those areas. And lastly, and Guy, I don't know if you can help us with this, but to identify our roads and segments. You know, right now, we have, we have some segments here. We have that asset class of roads. That the, I think somebody manages for us, our whole inventory of roads. And if we, it's just kind of like West Clear Lake, West Clear Lake, West Clear Lake. Yeah, it'd be nice if we had the addresses of what those sections are, the just just running it. So again, that's worth it, that we here the committee can can work on to better identify the roads. But no, this, this is well needed, and I look forward to getting the community fired up on it.
Yeah, no, I will, I I agree with everything that, if it's a kind of way it has to do. I think it does get to some of the comments that were made when we had the presentations by D L Z on a road dashboard. I think it was Fonzie that said something about a road dashboard, and I think this is a start. I, like George, would like to see what those resident numbers are in there. Because South Clear Lake's pretty long, West Clear Lake's long, and I know that I walk, I see, you know. Different drains and, you know, different cracks on the river. Now that we've seen the D L Z presentation, you see where water's cooling, so that would help on here. And if we could add, as we move forward or as the committee moves forward, is adding like the P A S A and the core. So we can see what that looks like, especially in that.
End of year.
Yeah, in the year.
Flat finish.
However, that's put together. And having worked with the state in other positions, I would never assume that the funding will ever go away. We'll be having another governor soon, so. That's a great idea, and I I think that's fabulous, it's a pity to be that optimistic. So I, and I would like to see as a part of that, how we prioritize and choose which projects need to be done. And even though we get seventy five percent from the state, we as a community still have to come up with that twenty five percent. And I think we need to be very diligent about how we spend our monies, which is all part of this committee.
Yeah, as you remember from the budgeting exercise, that we have funds set up. Of road maintenance, and those are the ones that I used to constrain them all.
And I like that you assumed the current tax levy too, I think that was a good assumption. So where does this go next? What is your plan? Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to open it up to the public or any comments or questions for Dan.
This is Brandon, second motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say no, by saying aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion carries, open for the public.
We have a comment? Kathy Shaco, one forty four. Some of those roads, and I don't know anything about it, but some of the roads are on sand and some are on swamp. So, you know, that would certainly contribute to the wear and tear. And the, you know. It seems kind of foolish to tear everything up if it's already been down for thirty eight years. You know, let's start over.
Yeah, so I talked to D L Z and Todd is actually, I saw him online. So I would ask him to correct anything that I'm going to say. But you know, my conversations with Todd is that in areas of that are wet. There is a certain engineering solutions to those areas to hold and bind the sub-layer of stone. It's it's entitled a Geo Mesh. Essentially, it's a, it's a structural fabric that you put down and then pour the structural stone on top. And as as we build that up, the whole intention is to distribute the load of the vehicles out over a much broader area. And so he did not see that as a particular challenge for us. And he does understand that we're on some swampy areas.
John, well, I'm sure the section seems as though council could ask for input from public as well as yourselves with names and qualifications of various groups. So that's meaning you can have a whole list of people to select from. We do have a lot of talent around the lake, and I think we as a community can provide a number of them. And then you start them out, but I suggest we proceed with vigor because time disappears and we don't start them out, and we won't start.
Anybody else?
Brian, whatever, eight twenty two, South Clear Lake, Dan, the chart fill one. If we kind of take a more aggressive approach to replacing the roads with a larger term versus just kind of continuing to replace. The cost difference per mile or whatever, what's the difference in 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 that between, you know, building a fifteen to thirty year road versus the the ten year?
Yeah, so I use the actual estimates that D L Z prepared for the C C M G projects. The three road segments that we're currently considering for this year as representative costs for the reconstruction piece. In there, then they also, in their presentation in November, they also estimated a cost. So I use a ratio to go back to the re-grind and resurface and use that cost. When it comes down to actual mileage of road, for the same amount of money, you get about two point two miles of road. And the grind and resurface, and you get on the order of almost point nine miles for the reconstruction aspect. A little under half.
Or a little over two to one.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Let's just make a motion to close.
You want to jump online and make sure?
Todd, do you want to add anything to the conversation?
No, I think you covered it all. I, everything that was stated, I I agree with.
Hi, this is Jim, eleven twenty, South Clear Lake. Was there ever a bidding out between D L Z and another company to do different bids on this?
You're talking bids on the road projects?
Yes, sir.
D L Z is the engineering firm, they're not actually the ones that bid to do the actual work.
My question still stands, Dan, why are there another engineering company that bid it?
D L Z is our engineering firm. We have multiple people bidding on the contract work, but now, right now, D L Z is our engineering firm. We didn't have anybody bid the engineer, engineering portion of that.
So we assume, we take their reference as being the best.
We have had two engineering firms since I've been here, E R I and D L Z. And looking at the P A S A ratings for both of those engineering firms, they were almost identical.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to close public comment.
Second, Brandon.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, if I say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion carries. All right, any other comments for for Dan?
But what, Dan, Dan, I think that we've done a very good job of identifying holes in the process. And coming up with solutions moving forward, and that is an excellent first step, appreciate the time and energy you put into it.
Well, one of the, one of the things I can see is we're talking about comprehensive plan, you know, and this and like it currently has our road stuff and that. And combining it with our G I S system or, and we could put all this stuff on layers and actually have it out there on our website. These are the roads, these are the conditions and, you know.
Speaking of G I S, is that going to be open to people?
Yes, it will be open to the council members and public standing. George at the last meeting, for any of you that weren't here, had asked. Currently, we're in the process of G I Sing all of our grinder stations, all of the manhole covers, I think about fifty five of them. We still have some drains, the problem with the drains is, you know, when they go underground, they, we don't know necessarily where they go or where they came from. So that's going to be a little bit more interesting to get that stuff into G I S. But, you know, once we get that, right now, we've got three of us, I believe, that have access to it. But we have the ability to change stuff in there, and we don't want to get that out there yet. So we're working on a solution to allow everybody to view this up and not be able to change it, so.
Yes, that's.
With with the G I S system and the drains, will it identify those that are on easements and those that are just strictly private property?
The easement on the G I S system, we use the base map of the beacon, the Stevan County Beacon. And that's where the easements are brought from. You can turn on and off easements on that. Any other questions? Dan, thank you, Dan.
Yeah, I think that I would just say that that in February, we should be there. Because it sounds like everybody's in agreement that a committee would would be beneficial to take a closer look at this and a number of the other elements. So what I'll bring forward in February is, you know, what those elements are from my notes tonight. And then if Darren's okay, we can assign a committee chair at meeting and. And any members, and if we collect his names. As John had mentioned, you know, we can discuss that.
Yeah, I would like us to be very transparent and include as many of the residents as possible that want to, based on their expertise. I don't, some people might have a passion about this or have previous experience, and so I'd like us to be very thoughtful. And that.
All right, so stay on our list, any other helpful reports?
I have none. I have just one other note. Robert and I in the background have been taking a look at the current fee schedule associated with. I L Ps, B Z A, B C, Plan Commission meetings in Alliance. In the U D O, the town council. In the UDO, uh, the town council is the one that, uh, has to, uh, uh, provide, uh, for any changes and approve those changes. Our current fee schedule has been in place since, uh, twenty sixteen. Um, it has not kept pace with the increase in services that we currently offer, uh, uh, for the folks doing projects through our zoning administration office. And so, uh, Robert has reached out with the other communities and has prepared a draft that I'm in, I'm in the process of reviewing, and I will, I would bring that to council. Um, and it's a discussion. Uh, I would like to, uh, for us as a goal to turn a final, a final ready, uh, to vote on in March.
I think that's a good move, especially in light that we're just talking about the, uh, roads and construction trucks, concrete trucks, lumber trucks are added where it is. Uh, you're not going to recruit all the road usage from them, but, uh, maybe an increase in building permits would recoup some of that, uh, that we're there to our roads. So it's a good time to take a look at it.
Moving on then, um, nothing under the unfinished business. Again, new business will be tabled. So we are down to item nine, training and review. Robert?
All right. So, um, I actually talked this together a couple of months ago, so I had brought my book out here, my, it's something. All right, so I'm the zoning researcher, Robert Ollie, um, and my job is to enforce his own requirements. But to kind of get this more like a history lesson than it is to tell you exactly what a zoning ordinance does. Um, cause the history behind the zoning, how, why we do zoning is important. So on my timeline, you'll see, um, in nineteen thirteen, the first national conference. What's the first national conference? I really don't know the answer to that. But here's what I'm going to tell you. Between eighteen ninety-three and nineteen twenty, there was uprising trend, or yeah, nineteen twenty, there was an uprising trends in communities trying to better themselves. Um, it wasn't until nineteen sixty that there was actually a zoning ordinance that was adopted in the nation. And that was actually through New York about places. Um, surprisingly enough, uh, but they've been doing planning years before nineteen sixteen. The nineteen twenty, certainly laws became more and more well-established, uh, between, um, the turn of the century up until that point. So pretty quickly, you saw a big change. Not, so in nineteen twenties, the SC or FZEA, the Standard State Zoning Act, which is probably, uh, regulated document, and the SCPA, Standard Planning Zoning Enabling Act, um, were adopted by the federal government. Um, it wasn't challenged and it was not challenged until nineteen twenty-six. And when I say utilitarian law, this is what I'm referencing to. So in nineteen twenty-six, the US Supreme Court held that zoning is a valid exercise of police power in which local governments use to protect public welfare. So this is the Supreme Court decision that said zoning is good to go, communities are allowed to do it. Uh, it wasn't until nineteen fifty-four, Berman versus Parker, which actually upheld the right for communities to use zonings, the zoning ordinance for aesthetics. So up until that point, it was kind of in the air whether or not you can determine, um, you know, for instance, uh, Clear Lake doesn't allow metal siding, right? It's aesthetic. Well, it actually, because of this nineteen fifty-four, um, uh, decision, that allows us to determine, hey, we're not allowed to have metal siding in our homes or our community. And it keeps our property values up. It keeps the shape of our community the way we want to do it. So it's very important that it's in the end. So that's just a little history lesson. Um, and then the only other thing I have on there is nineteen twenty-one, the state of Indiana gave cities the authority to regulate. So the federal government gave the states the right, uh, the right to regulate, and then the state gave the rest of its powers except cities, uh, the right to regulate. Uh, zoning ordinance versus comprehensive plan. Um, last month, George gave the, um, a training on the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan outlines. Well, the zoning ordinance is what brings the plan to life. So we have to have a comprehensive plan to be able to enforce the zoning. Um, so, uh, the zoning ordinance is a regulation to make the comprehensive plan red yellow. Now, you hear me saying zoning ordinance, and probably people probably understand what I'm saying, but we actually in this community have something called UDO. Now, I'm from Michigan. That doesn't exist in Michigan. So what's just kind of interesting to me, um, is the UDO is actually a combination of the zoning ordinance, the subdivision control ordinance, and our, um, and any other regulations, really, we want to put into a single document that pertaining to one another, but we use the flood hazard. Um, and that's, those are the three that we actually have in our ordinance, I believe. And then, uh, there's one other. But the zoning ordinance contains at least two elements. It's text and maps. Um, the IC thirty-six, that four, or that seven, that force that kind of regulates and establishes the processes for the creation of the, and the amendment of zoning ordinance within the state of Indiana. Um, this can only be done if a comprehensive plan has been adopted and they go back to you have to have a comprehensive plan. Um, the idea is the zoning ordinance should be written clearly, make use of illustrations, so that way the general public, um, you know, that, that's not playing in this world every day can kind of get a good understanding of what's going on. And I think our UDO does a good job of that. Um, common elements of the zoning ordinance, uh, we have purpose statements, definition, administrative procedures, zoning districts, development, design standards, parking, landscaping, science, et cetera. Um, these are all things that you'll find in our UDO. And if you ever have questions regarding anything, that's why I'm here. Um, and one of the most important characterizations of the zoning ordinance is the ability to bring development issues to the table. And that the public will have the opportunity to gauge and make their concerns known. Uh, the zoning ordinance is mainly a voice, no matter what the size of the community is, which is why public involvement is very important. And from a big one, when I talk to these guys about, you know, hiring in here, public input is very important. I encourage it. I don't want to ever see anyone say, uh, it doesn't affect me. I don't want to, I don't really have an opinion on it. You're in the community, it affects you no matter what. So, and, um, the resources are from the AK, Indiana chapter, citizens planner guide, and then this little lovely blue book, um, which is the Indiana Planning and Zoning Laws annotated twenty twenty-two edition. So, um, this has a lot of great information if anyone ever wants to take a look at it. So that's it. Any questions? That was a terrible, uh, presentation, but looks pretty. Well, that's a lot. Seven years of doing it, I found my niche. So I can talk all day about this stuff, but, uh, in reality, it's, it's what shapes communities, uh, besides the public. So.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. Good job. Good job.
What's the passion?
I try and appreciate it as far as.
Thank you.
Anything else that you have to add?
I, oh, no. No, general discussion.
General.
So the first thing I want to do is just publicly thank our first responders. Um, we have one in the room. We have some in the audience that interact with them a lot, um, in light of everything. I'll start crying that's happened in the past week. So thank you, Chris. Thank you to everybody that works with the first responders. So. The next thing I'd like to do is I would like us to consider, um, I know tonight is an exception, but we've had most of our agenda items table for February. So in the spirit of trying to keep our meetings a little bit more manageable, if we could consider two things. One, if we could consider moving the metrics to being posted on the website like the Friday before our council meeting, so the residents and community can still see the metrics. They would still be completed, but we didn't spend meeting time going over those. And I would like to go back and change the meeting order, so we move our unfinished business and new business prior to the monthly reports, just to keep us, um, I know in the past, we, last year summer, we moved it. But it seems as though all the employees do stay throughout the meeting. Um, so I would like us, in the spirit of recognizing and respecting the residents' time at the meetings, if we would, or consider moving that, those back to the original, where we were prior to last June.
Uh, my only comment, uh, with regards to the metrics is, uh, I don't want, I want an opportunity if I have a concern in looking at the metrics to be able to, to bring it out.
Absolutely. And I think that, that would be during the department, during the report time. And that's why I would ask that it would still be posted the Friday before. So if any residents had questions on metrics, that they could ask it during that department's presentation.
Okay. Good with that. Thanks.
Maybe just include a highlight of what's going right real quick and what's.
That's, that's.
I mean, I do have that with your reporters, your concerns, your possible concerns, so.
And Molly, if I could just, uh, we frog on it, onto that, uh, when we have a, a public hearing, uh, I would suggest that we also put that at the front of the agenda as opposed to at the back where it started, we had public hearings that started at ten o'clock at night. And, uh, it's just a terrible and certain disservice to the community. Uh, good. I've been, I've been probably, uh, when we have a public hearing, uh, the last one that we had started at ten o'clock at night. And if we could just put it at the front of the agenda and start it at seven o'clock for the public hearing. And then note that are just here for the hearing, if they don't want to stay for the whole meeting, at least they could take care of their, their business with us at the hearings.
And then one other thing, um, is Clear Lake Cove. And I don't know what we need to do, um, about that. And maybe Guy, you could shed some insight. I don't know who was involved. I know I wasn't on council. But we have residents with sandbags at their back doors. We have residents with sandbags on their driveways and by their mailboxes. And I feel as though that's unfinished business from a town.
That was.
So I don't know.
Here, we put the grains and everything in the, the driveways already.
So the sandbags don't need to be there. So can we go and talk to the residents and remove the sandbags?
They, when we got those, they were, they were their property.
So it's the residents that need.
If they want them gone, I'll come pick them up. Yes. Nobody has said anything to me about the sandbags.
Okay. I just know some people that I've talked to, um, have said they need to leave them there because the water's still a problem. So I was.
He's brought their attention.
Okay, thank you.
In the house? All right, open up to the public.
Uh, here we go. Eight forty-four, I just want to say it was a good meeting. Thank you.
What would it be if Todd didn't say so? I'd love to be able to describe, Molly, with respect to what you were saying. Um, you guys have a policy on just create, what you've described as a consent agenda. Um, and I don't know if there's statute that prohibits a consent agenda, um, but it would allow for everything that you do. Um, you would publish, you would acknowledge that everything is reviewed. You have, you have an opportunity to pull anything out of the consent agenda that you wish to discuss further, but you, with one vote, get routine reports out of the way and, and spend most of your time talking about strategy and policy and not the, the day-to-day operations. So, um, certainly in effective moments, not been on, uh, you create a policy, allows for a consent agenda, and you use it to your advantage, uh, in both avoiding and encouraging conversation when needed.
And, and we have, especially when we have a special guest, we will rewrite your agenda forward. So.
Well, this would use, I could spend a day to allow for in block. I'm going to vote on these ten things at once. And, um, it's a very effective tool in managing your time, knowing that anyone can pull any of the items out at any time. Uh, but in order to, you have to have stuff available prior to meetings so that those people know I've reviewed this and I'm uncomfortable, I want to pull it out, or no, I'm willing to vote on it based on reviewing what was given to me, uh, in fair notice.
Thank you.
Next up. What else?
Molly, I'll make a motion during the meeting.
Spread. I'll second. I have a lot of things. Fortunately, if I can, although whoever's even five is in that.
We're not.
Both same time, or can yours? Thank you.